Who's man's jump? Who's man's? Sir, you guys need help.
Go ahead and call me the board of the pledge.
Pledge of the flag, the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion to approve the agendas. So move. Take a gin, Steve will say.
I'd fine.
Got a motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council workshop report. Supremedance of the October seventh, twenty thirteen Hampton City Council Workshop. Numbers present were Lukensmeyer, Hogback, Davies, Praline, Eckard, absent were Harms and myself. Also present were City Manager Ron, Public Works Director Doug Tar, Mayor Protem Lukensmeyer. Called the workshop order at six P M., pledge of allegiance cited. Mayor Protem offered time for public comment, there were no comments. Christine Rasch, Chief of Main Street Coordinator invited the council and mayor to meet with the Main Street Iowa Representatives on October twenty second, twenty thirteen at six thirty P M. at seven one as part of the annual Main Street Hampton Program Review. Mayor Protem Lukensmeyer invited Dr. Alcory to address the council with his concerns of neighbors parking for long periods of time in front of his dental office at one oh nine Third Street Northeast. He requested the council consider posting signs for patient parking only between eight A M. and five P M. Monday through Friday. He was open for other options to consider, the policy request is reasonable and would solve the matter. Council will give further consideration and seek Chief Schaefer's input at a future meeting. Don Faber, Three Rivers Benefits participated through speakerphone to update the council on the upcoming Wellmark Health Insurance Renewal Options. He indicated that the Affordable Healthcare Act fees would be in the neighborhood of an additional fifteen thousand dollars to the city of Hampton. He also recommended renewing the policy for December first, twenty thirteen at the seventeen percent increase in premium and give consideration to the upcoming renewal offer expected from Wellmark for the January first, twenty fourteen renewal. If the one one fourteen renewal is more economical to the city, we can opt for it then. Consensus of the council is to place the December first renewal on the council agenda for consideration. Ron passed out a rough draft of an ordinance amendment addressing off-street parking enforcement issues. Council will review and Chief Schaefer will give some input on this matter at a future meeting. Ron sought council direction for a design of property owner recognition program, brought up at a previous meeting. As a starting point, the council directed Ron to draft a program based on a similar one used in Ossioa, Iowa. Doug Tar updated the council on a report of activities of the North Iowa Landfill Board. Russ Morgan is a Hampton representative on the board. Morgan's report focused on board's interest in ramping up community recycling education. In other unfinished business, Mayor Protem Lukensmeyer suggested considering working with NIAC Education Coordinator on recycling education needs. Krayakard inquired with Dun on the status of the fire department's nineteen sixty-seven Plymouth being sold and the local step program discussions. Dun explained that the fire chief indicated they have not yet got the car prepped for sale and will check with Chief Schaefer on the step discussions. Meeting concluded at six fifty-six P M. With that, I thank Mr. Lukensmeyer for referring him forward to that meeting and offer time for public comment if there is any. Valen, Manana, you guys are on the agendas.
Right, do you lay up here?
If you please.
I think you both should come on.
No. I was in the machine shop too many years ago. Wrong language falls out of my mouth or... I'm sorry.
It's crank small, right?
Yeah.
We're here to complain about our neighbor. We have a serious issue. She's the neighbor too. I get the front view, they have the side view.
And what's your name, I'm sorry?
Evelyn Goodell. She lives right across the street from us.
Okay.
The other night, I had called the police department, I don't remember what night it was, because he was outside in his underwear. I was told that it was like wearing a bathing suit that he was fine. Well, when I sit on my patio and I look at that, that's not fine. The police officer told him to put some pants on. He also has been urinating in the bushes and...
I get that, you... Pooping?
Pooping.
In the south side of the house.
Do you want to come up? Yeah. Do you want to come up?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Just want to make sure we... Make sure everybody can hear.
Make sure we hear all this.
So do you know where this house is?
Yep.
And his name?
I'm not, and I should know, I'm trying to figure.
Okay, Hardee's Road, straight south.
Yeah.
On the dead end road. Moose and Madonna are in the brown house. And then Bobby O lives in the blue house. And Mr. Question. I don't know, I call him Mr. Levine, sorry, that's just what I call him now, he's cutesy-cutesy. He lives in the white house with red trim.
Okay.
I live on the opposite side, so my living view is his private parts.
Okay.
Because he will literally come out. But that's naked.
Out the front door?
Out his front door. Because I don't know why he does it, but he comes out his front door, goes north to that side of his house, and I don't know what he's doing. But then he comes back and he's... That's naked. He's getting more and more, he does it all the time. He's not there.
Is there any particular time of day that it occurred more?
See, Bob just asked me that, and it just depends on, in the morning for sure, then afternoon. It just depends on when the wind blows in, I don't know. You can't pick it on him. Bob says I have to call him, I'm sorry, I haven't called anybody. Because what could he do? Well, by the time they get there, his property's full of poop. And then they're kind of, you know, we've... Moose has caught him in a situation where he's squatting over a bucket, well, you know what the hell he's doing, I'm sorry. But they can't do anything because there's some poop on the ground. So it's like, you get discouraged from calling. Yes. And then the house stinks. Our neighbor, our neighbor to the north is our renter, we own that little house. And he can't open his windows to the north because the house stinks. I mean, you can smell it outside. Personally, I think the house got blown for. He just added to it.
And I think it's a hat, a house answered, and I think it's, you know, if that house got just fired, anything and everything.
If people leave stuff on your front yard, I guarantee you, it's not in that house. Because we have seen him bring everything from sheet rock, you name it, he has brought it to the house. And it's all over in there. Like bad. He's a hoarder, is that what you call it?
I don't know.
He's, you name it, if he's seen it, he has brought it.
Chief, not to interrupt, but isn't it unlawful if they took, I mean, if he comes out in his mood, is it unlawful for them to take a picture? To prove that he doesn't?
I thought that, then I thought I'd be considered a pervert.
No, that would be, you know, that would be proof. I mean, the other thing that I, after I found out, you know, that that was the case, you know, I talked with Attorney Mike Cross and asked him if the people that witnessed us, if we can't catch him doing it, or get him on videotape, whatever, that if the people that actually catch him doing it, if they were to write a written statement and were willing to testify in court to what they saw, would this be enough to go to court? And he told me yes, that it would be.
Court for what? What does that do though?
Well, he would be charged with indecent exposure, or if he's urinating in public, we have a city charge for that.
So basically, we're just looking at a bunch of charges. The man needs psychiatric help. Be placed in a proper facility.
But depending on how he reacts to this, that could lead to him getting some help.
Yeah, it starts the ball rolling.
I think that would, I mean, I don't have to tell you what to do, but I would, I'd start.
Well, we even wanted to take pictures, but I mean, where do you, are we perverts? Being across the street.
Well, no, I didn't understand that, because even asking him, I felt uncomfortable asking. But you know, that's a good start, and then obviously, he does need some help.
Oh yeah, he, he, I mean, just to be a neighbor and watch him across the street. Well, Moose, what's in that tree? Because he's picking whatever is in that tree, and he's bagging it up and he's eating it.
Weed leaves.
He eats everything. He will collect leaves. I'm assuming it's toilet paper, I know you're not supposed to assume, and I'm really not exaggerating, but this is really gross people. He will collect leaves. Now, if they're falling, and he bags them in his little fairway bags, and I'm assuming that's just toilet paper.
No, and he gets his toilet paper out there at Bamshell, I don't deserve that. He'll go into the porta potty, he'll come out with some ancient roll of toilet paper.
I mean, everybody's entitled to live however they choose to live. I have been told, and I don't know if it's true, that he's from Romania, and that's how you live in that country, blah blah blah. He's across the street.
That's very true, that they live like that in Romania.
Yeah, and so that being a hoarder is fine, and picking up leaves and eating grass, and I mean, you can't get him on mowing as well on backwards because the mower doesn't work and he's out mowing at night. I'm not going to complain he's got mowed because otherwise he gets in trouble. But coming up, ass naked, peeing between his house and Bobby O's house, you can see him in the bushes doing it. It's, it's, I don't know, but they see him that side, I get the front part.
The city workers caught him too, didn't they, Bob?
Problem is, the picture on the camera was not good enough to do anything with.
I almost think he's, he thinks it's a game now. When did you guys, somebody came to give papers, and he literally walked out in a little gray white guy.
Well, I think Bob's, you know, he's kind of summed it up, if, you know, you could wait and take pictures, or if you're willing to make a statement, I would, that's, I would go ahead and do that, I would do that as soon as possible.
Okay.
What about the odor you guys are talking about? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that fall under the nuisance?
Yes.
We also have the county health department to investigate that.
See, that's what I think that's what needs to happen. I mean, I don't think he, I think his health is, is not good to begin with. He's old, I don't know how old he is. But I just, he had a stroke or whatever, some years back here, but I just don't think living in them, in that situation is healthy in a way. Last winter, last winter when he moved in, and I know it was before winter because he was riding his bike in the snow, we're talking freezing below zero, so if he has heat, I don't know. He does have electricity, because every now and then you can see a light pop on, but it's not on very long. But my concern is, from the time he moved in until now, he has got that house so jam-packed full of God only knows what it is, on top of the urine, and been taking showers out in God's nature, or what you want to call it. What's going to happen this winter?
Well, if public health gets involved, and he is a hoarder.
Oh, he's a hoarder.
This could lead to the help that we all really wanted to have.
Yeah, Doug?
I had an issue like this previously a couple of years ago, where I contacted the county sanitarian, and this was a similar situation, but it was more along the lines I had too many cats, and we were getting odor complaints, we were getting a whole bunch of complaints with that. When I contacted the county sanitarian, we met, we went to the, the property, and he said there's no children involved, his hands are tied, there's nothing really that you would do. Now, that's not to say if Bob and law enforcement got involved, if that wouldn't maybe help things a little bit more, I don't know, but I do know that's...
Well, what I'm saying is that, you know, nuisance code.
Yeah, we could do a nuisance.
It talks about, you know, offensive orders and...
So we could go that route.
Doug's referring to hoarding. Hoarding is not against the law, no. But the stench, if it's offending the neighbors, that is a nuisance, and the police or Doug, whoever, can follow through with that.
Now, as far as what you guys are talking about with, you know, what psychological issues or whatever may be wrong with him, I don't know. Is it, I think Russell Wood.
We went through this entire process when he lived up in a nice place in Dead End. We went to Russell Wood, we went to county public health nurse, I have been with her.
So he almost knows what he can do and what he can't do.
Well, he...
As long as it's not affecting others, he, he's got, you know, there's just limits on what anybody else can do, but except the smell is one area we can do something with.
Yeah, the smell, I...
And I'm not being a pervert if I put pictures. I mean, think about it, you know, you hear all this stuff, and then you want me to be on my deck and boo boo.
I would think what would be more helpful would be if you could catch him in the act of defecating on his front lawn, or...
He walks, he walks out his front and then goes around to the bushes, which are now water bushes.
Is it still in public view?
Not once he goes into the bush up along the house, you can't actually see him squat like a Sasquatch, but you're just smelling it.
But it won't be long and the leaves will be gone.
Oh, that's true.
True. Yep. Bob, any other suggestions for these folks?
I just encourage him to call when he's, when he's out there. I mean, even, you know, and like we say, I mean, if they actually see his private parts, or they can see that he is urinating, written statement, according to Mike, is good enough. I did talk to Mike about the deal with the skivvies, and there isn't a whole lot. I mean, it's not proper, but...
It's pretty touchy because...
It's covered.
It's covered. I mean, we've got, we've got people with their jeans hanging clear down to their knees with their boxer underwear showing, and, you know, nothing can be done, so.
Have you actually, you've actually seen him completely naked outside the house?
Yeah, he'll come out.
So that's enough, that they can actually make a report, correct?
Yes.
You may just go there out, and then you may not even have to take a picture. And in, and in the meantime...
Well, at home, Roger and I, and Crystal's my daughter, because she's, you know, lives here, we decided, you know, there's a, there's a line that crosses...
Well, I guess I don't even know that you have to go that far. I've seen computer. Yeah, go ahead.
And if it's occurring on a regular enough basis, we can set up a camera.
Oh, yeah.
In the window, I mean, we can, a video camera to, you know, he's coming out naked.
I would think too, what you're talking about with, if Mike okayed his statement, and he thinks that would be good enough, and then if you call the P D., each time you see it happen, let them track it so they have documented instances. There's a third party, you know, documenting, hey, the neighbor's called again, that he's out here again, and then, and then maybe that, you know, maybe they can track it by time, you know, yes.
Well, we assume, and I hate to use the word assume, but we assume the reason why he comes out is because he can't, I have him in the house, but the kitchen's supposed to be back there, but I don't think he can get to it. So I think that's why he comes out, and then he goes around, and does whatever, and then he goes back around, and like eating the leaves on that tree and berries and... And when I talk to other people prior to all of this stuff, everybody tells me he's from Romania, it's the way he lives, blah blah blah, and that's all fine and dandy, but enough is enough when you guys sit and watch.
Well, this isn't Romania.
Exactly, he's across the street.
Evelyn, how many times have you called the cops?
I don't, sorry. I told him.
Okay, did.
And we, I love you, there's been issues and you called and nobody's answered, so I just got to report it. But Bob says I have to call.
Well, in this specific instance, I think it would help your case, because it would help, it would help Bob track, and it would, it would back up your case if it does record.
I just, home health or whatever, somebody needs to psychologically do whatever you do with it. Yeah. Why, they just send that fuck?
But this might, this might get the ball rolling a little bit, I mean...
You have to, you have to get situations documented. And, and so it's, it's hard, it's hard to do that if, if you don't call and, and let those situations be documented. You know, you can, you can write up a two-page report, but if there's not a third party to verify it, then, you know, the judge may just say that's...
Okay, so just make sure somebody in your house is... Two five, two nine.
You got one question for Doug.
Yeah, go ahead.
Doug, when he was living on Twelfth Avenue, and I, I understand, it was an apartment on Twelfth Avenue. I understand exactly what you're talking about, his living conditions, because I've been personally, and part of a group of people that have helped clear some of his belongings out. I know what the conditions are likely, very accurate inside house, it's a path, and it's, it's not good, but it took them a long time to get him evicted from those apartments. What was the key factor to that?
I, I honestly don't know Dick, other than recording behavior patterns, basically, I think is the baby. To evict somebody, he was writing somebody else's problem. This is his property, he now owns this house. So now it's owner occupied, to whereas, that's a different scenario than if you're renting.
Yeah, the North Iowa Housing Authority was the one that got involved with the, up there at the apartment. It came to a point where everybody was complaining of the smell that was emanating from the apartment. As I understand it, when you walk through the apartment and everything, it was armed bit high, you walked right to get there.
Oh, it was higher than that?
Was it? I think there was a load concerned also.
So here's a visual for you, since obviously you guys have a pass with this guy, if that was an apartment, multiply that by four twelve, it's a house now.
Now, but see, this, there's a difference. North Iowa Housing Authority has the, has the ability to do that thing, that those things and an eviction. We don't have that, because the guy owns the house.
It's like, it's like we would be the landlord if Bobby would do that.
I, I think one of the key things, and I thought maybe you would be recalling this, was that he had things stacked against baseboard heating.
Oh, you can see.
It was a fire hazard, and I think that was the key thing that caused them to...
I don't think there's any heat in that house, that furnace hasn't worked for some years and...
Well, this is in the apartment building that he was in, and from this previous, previous setting. I guess I would encourage you, like Val has said, that we've got to get the ball rolling, get some documentation, so that he can get some help, and he's not, he's not unintelligent. He's an intelligent person. His living styles are different, but without some documentation, it would be very helpful. But we know that nudity is not allowed, so if you can help document that, whether it's a picture or a phone call, that'd be a great help.
What about when he's collecting water and things like this? That's just like, he'll do that too, with the back of the...
Help us help you, I guess is what I...
I don't want help, I want him to get help.
Well, well, but documentation, and I think, I think that's the key.
Okay, do you have something about the smell?
Yeah. Get right on that, or Doug, or one of them can get right on that, and get the ball rolling.
But we see him in dumpsters, we'll call too, because that, I know him when... Down the street. At the Starland? No, Charles and... We're, we're no less now. They moved out, and they had mattresses and stuff, and that was the one I called Bob on, because he brought it home, and it was such a thing, boy, he tacked it on the back of that. And then he sees, he will bring it home on his little bike. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I want you to call Bob. Yeah, call Bob. Yeah, speak up. Back to me. Do we have to stay?
Anything else under public comment, Ben? Move forward, Ben.
Should we go?
New business, we have consideration of the December first, twenty thirteen Wellmark Health Insurance Policy Renewal.
All right, E B E.
Did you want to go with that again, or?
Well, just briefly, you know, we, we heard from Don Faber from our Three Rivers, the Wellmark proposal for a seventeen point one six percent increase for a December first renewal. We're recommending renewing for the December first renewal, and then when we get the numbers, new rate proposal from Wellmark for the January first renewal, which will have the Affordable Healthcare Act plan in it, see what that rate is, and if it's less than the rate for this renewal, then we'll compare the benefits versus the rate, and we'll see what we want to do at that time. So recommending renewing for the December one. Questions?
Am I understanding is correct that by some off chance, the January premium is lower, we can still pay that?
We can. Wellmark, basically...
Is really a safety net.
It is, they're doing this to the benefit of all their customers, they're giving them a December first option to compare to a January first option with the Affordable Healthcare Act included, and so that's what we're good, we're supposed to be pleased with this, so. No, it is, it is good that they're, they're giving us the option, because it's an unknown one, January one, they're going to pay itself. Thank you.
There's no questions, an entertaining motion?
Can we make a motion to approve the December first offer?
One second.
Second.
A motion by Dan, and a second by Dick to approve the December first Wellmark Insurance Policy Renewal. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have approval of claims submitted by staff tonight, those are in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and fourteen cents. entertain a motion to approve claims?
So move.
A motion by Steve, and a second by Val to approve the claims. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Next is consideration of approval and adoption of Resolution twenty thirteen dash twenty, the Revolution proposing proposal of an interest in real property by gift to the state of J A R Memorial Hall in the nearest public hearing, for reasons of the city manager, Doug.
Thank you. Where is section three sixty-four point seven of the Code of Iowa, provides that the city may dispose of an interest in real property by gift after a public hearing thereon. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of Hampton, Iowa, has filed, the city council of City of Hampton, Iowa hereby proposes to convey its interest in following described real estate by gift to wit, lot five in the south twenty and four fifths feet, lot six, block thirteen, Gillette's addition to Hampton Franklin County, Iowa, to Franklin County, Iowa. An abstract will be provided to the recipient, and the conveyance shall be by corporate warrant T D. A public hearing will be held on the twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand thirteen at six P M. at the city council chambers, one twenty-two First Avenue Northwest Hampton, Iowa, at which time the city council will hear objections, if any, to the proposed conveyance from any interested party. City manager is directed to publish notice of the said public hearing in conformance with Iowa law. Thank you, Mary.
Is there any questions? Entertain a motion, then? Can we make a motion that we approved and adopt Resolution twenty thirteen dash twenty? One second. All second. A motion by Dick and a second by Jim to approve the adopted Resolution twenty thirteen dash twenty, any discussion? We'll call Luke Eckard.
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Lukensmeyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Next is consent agenda. Tonight, that includes approving the previous minutes as drafted from the Thursday, September twenty-third, twenty thirteen Regular Session Meeting. Scheduling the next regular session for Thursday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen at six P M. in City Council Chambers. Approval of liquor licensing renewal for Casey's general store number sixteen oh five, located at seven nineteen Fourth Street Northeast in Hampton. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can we make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Diane, and a second by Val to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staff reports, fire chief, all consensus一致, please Chief Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager. Anybody have any questions for me after the discussion we had tonight? I had to go back and check to see how many actual calls that we had received reference to this particular individual, and here as I can tell, or here as they could pull up, there were two. One was last year, and there was a complaint about him either defecating or urinating out the backyard. The other one was just recently with, with him being out in his underwear. The other ones that we've had have been nuisances, which we did address. In fact, it might even have been generated by us, not somebody else. And he was served with those, and he basically took care of them. As far as the odor, we will look into that. I guess I haven't heard that one yet, and, but I have no doubt, basically, first-hand experience from all of those that we have encountered. So, still nothing new or a missing person. It's just, it's mystery. It's just, uh, it's industry and we've done everything that we can think of in order to, um, you know, try to locate him and, um, basically kind of follow up on, uh, different things and, uh, taking those interviews and people to see if they remember anything or, or whatever. Um, I just ask, you know, basically the public that if they know anything or heard anything or whatever, you know, basically to give us a call. I know there's a lot of third-hand information, uh, that is really what we're looking for, kind of looking for people that know firsthand. You know, if they might have seen, uh, after that, you know, midnight area or whatever to, to come forward, at least let us know or whatever. Um, and hopefully, you know, they'll be found, so. Anybody have any questions? Chief, will you, uh, and your department be doing a number of fault push for nuisances before smell? Yes. In fact, that's one of the things, uh, and I'll be honest, you know, during the summertime, I was, I relax, whatever. Uh, now that we're full staff and we got the new guys on, that is one thing that I did bring to their attention, that we need to start going and, and go around looking at, you know, checking the properties, whatever, and they have started doing that. On the lines, um, the other thing too is with two new guys, I have noticed that, um, you know, the enforcement as far as speed and seatbelts, different things like that, has kind of gotten stepped up also. Uh, so we'll have to see as far as doing that, doing the step thing, I would kind of want to do that, but, um, they've kind of been out doing some traffic, so. Good reach. Who else? Thank you.
Another talk?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, I don't think anybody needs to remind anyone in the fall season, um, some of the questions that may come up is, was that sweeper gonna go out? And honestly, we wait until, you know, a lot more leaves are down on the ground before we, uh, expend money on the, uh, fuel for that big machine. Um, but we will be getting it out, you know, uh, but we're gonna have to wait and just see how the season goes and weather. We'll dictate a lot of that, um, and I had a lot of concerns that I met with this week and we had that discussion a little bit. Cause some leaves, uh, from the flushing program, uh, had washed out in the street, but, uh, so the street parks have had to, uh, work nice. Some of the cafes and tops and different things, especially after the last rainfall. Uh, but, uh, we're just kind of in a fall mode right now, um, soon to get ready for winter prep and, uh, and I guess, does anybody have any questions or concerns with it, though?
I guess I have one question. Um, this is back on the water tower project, we had problems getting that, a payment going with, they were having issues with our payment. Did that ever get resolved in a, in a sense that?
No, they didn't get, they didn't have an issue with our payment. They, uh, they were trying to bill us more than they had come and we refused and then they kept invoicing us. And so, but we haven't received an invoice for quite some time, we're opening up again.
At the council site, how are we doing if you're bringing the brush?
Uh, actually, when you guys were at the Lega Cities, uh, we've got a lot of it burned up and then we've actually had two controlled burns, one then and then we just had one this, earlier this week and, uh, no complaints, so it's, it's going pretty well.
Doug had a question about, um, private property trees can be analyzed, so they're hard for vehicles to down there. So I, I didn't have an answer, I don't know what to, it's a property owner's responsibility to take care of the trees on their property, but when it hangs onto the alleyway, I told him I would talk to you and find out what goes on.
Actually, actually, it's still their responsibility as well, but we do and have, um, gone down the alleys and done some trimming. Uh, we did some of that this spring. Um, if, if someone wants to call in those concerns to me at City Hall, let me know exactly what they're talking about. I gladly take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, we will be going into some, uh, pruning mode here pretty soon, um, as, as we typically do in the fall.
I'll pass them on, thank you.
That'd be great, thank you. Thank you.
If you all recall, last year Max Sharp owns property down, uh, Fifth Street Southwest and there was some question whether or not the city owned the, what looks like an alley or, and we determined it was a private drive and, uh, told him at the time, Mike Cross told him that if, uh, you know, that it's a private drive and he would need to maintain it. He let me know a month or so ago that they wished to deed it to the city. And so I had a conversation with Mike to begin that process and, um, I just, um, Mike was, uh, having some questions about, um, the entire length of it, east, west, and, uh, because there's, of course, more than Max Sharp owns property in there, so I ordered a title search to be completed for the area which begins by the street department, uh, the west side of the abandoned railroad track and to head west all the way to Sixth Street Southwest. With, it's, it's not gonna be an expensive search, it might be a couple hundred dollars, uh, but the abstract office is gonna do it. That will, uh, and we'll get that information to Mike Cross and then he'll determine who needs to, uh, participate in deeding to the city and then we gotta make sure, he'll send them a letter and see if they're all on board and deeding to the city, so. Just wanted to let me know that we're in that process. Kent Wilkinson, Fire Chief Wilkinson called me this afternoon to say that the aerial truck, he's taking the aerial fire truck, the ladder truck to Ames, I think Ames or Ames tomorrow, to, there's an issue with some sort of a seal or hydraulic line or seal, um, in the, the base of the swiveling ladder, extension ladder. So it's, they've looked at it here, the firemen determined whether they, something they can work on and it isn't, so, um, he's taking it down there to have it looked at and it could be expensive, he said, anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars, so. Just wanted to give you a heads up that there's gonna be a repair coming on that, so. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Council reports, Val?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Steve?
Nothing for me either.
Yep.
Two things, we've received certificates to go along with a nice little award. They have, they have misplaced it, but we did receive it, so I'll give that to you, Mr. Mayor. And then the State Main Street, um, organization will be here for their accreditation visit with the Chamber Main Street on October twenty-second and twenty-third. I think we've heard about that at the workshop, that it might be in the minutes, everybody just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Dick?
Uh, just like to mention, uh, gentlemen, we've been doing a tremendous amount of work with the, uh, with our trees. Randy Sanders, who's from Bradford, has done several things here that are worthy of, uh, taking note. Um, homecoming weekend on Friday, we have lined up volunteer help to fence the new evergreen trees, uh, that are along Fourth Avenue. No one showed up, so he did it by himself. So it's gonna be, uh, about five students and, uh, faculty advisor, but no one did show up. I, I actually delivered some materials to him, I'm thinking they were gonna be helping, but wanna check back with him. He, he likes doing it. The other thing is he's contacted Wayne Feuerberg, he was the original forester that helped us, uh, in our long-range goals of, of, uh, Airman Park, enhancing the trees and harvesting and so forth. On the twenty-third of October, Wayne will be in town and I was convinced him to come out of retirement and help to look at the trees, uh, there are fourteen that have been identified as harvestable, needing to be harvested, but having value. And he's gonna, you know, we're gonna be marking and, uh, estimating footage and then putting these trees up to help. Wayne is gonna be helping put up, uh, the bidding process, getting it in order so that various foresters around the state would be involved. So hopefully we'll finance next year's tree planting. Randy, today replaced two trees, one of the oak trees, one of the expensive trees that we got, didn't grow. We got another tree that, uh, and one of the walnut trees that didn't grow, so he's been doing a lot of work for us. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Diane?
Uh, went to the Iowa Lega Cities Conference and two of the seminars, I went to, one was the Tiff Seminar, which always, this helps me understand better. Also went to the community fundraising one, kind of had a library in mind on that, with their new project.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Wyomans for showing up and voicing their concerns and, uh, I think it's, kind of proves the point that the chief has told us many times over the years that, uh, you know, they can't take care of something if they don't know about it. You've gotta call them, let the PD know, even though they seem to be a consequential view or of not much value. As long as they get something they can document, you know, a process or a problem, it will certainly help them. Uh, last, I forgot, but I'd like to thank you and your staff for the alley approach at our place, but in the alley that goes by our place. That's a lot better than shoveling up all the gravel, it gets washed out after the rains and it's just terrific. And thank you, and thank you everybody else for such a good job, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, all I have is a report on Lega Cities. Uh, my focus, uh, was mostly on, uh, open meetings, open records type stuff and, uh, um, you know, I, I think it's, uh, I, well, I found it to be kind of, uh, I guess alarming at how, uh, how many city officials there were across the state who objected to open meetings and to, you, you, not, not, not so much that their meetings have to be open, but, well, why can't we close it for this reason or for that reason? And why can't, uh, you know, why does this, uh, they wanted more restrictions on open records. They, they didn't wanna have to provide records at, at such a request. And they were given some pretty extreme examples, which I kind of understood, understood a little bit, because it sounded like, uh, there were a couple cities that were dealing with people who were being difficult for, say, being difficult. They wanted every, every record with, uh, with their name on it going back thirty years. I see this, so, um, and so, and so there was a lot of balance in, in that, but, um, really, I think, I, I think our focus, it, it has been good in that, in that, uh, um, we haven't had to deal with anybody really being difficult in that fashion and, um, you know, I think, uh, never close a meeting unless we, you know, uh, dealing with negotiations and things like that, so. Um, those are all good things and, and, uh, just, I'd like to reiterate to people that the law says, you may close a meeting, doesn't mean you have to close a meeting, you may close a meeting. So, um, it just, um, I, I think sometimes public bodies use that term "may" maybe a little bit too many. And it hurt a lot from the, from the Iowa Public Information Board as well. And I encourage anybody who has any questions on open meetings or open records to give them a call. That's what they, therefore, they've only got a three-person staff, I think they said, but, uh, they're keeping them busy and, and, uh, I called them to question them last week as a matter of fact and they were right quick with, uh, with what I was looking for, so. It was a good experience and, uh, I'd probably say we will, so. If there's nothing else, so.
Oh, oh, you've got a set trick or treating.
Right. You've got a set trick or treating. Okay. Yes, five to seven, trick or treating hours, five to seven on Thursday, October thir-, you got that, Jeff? Thursday, October thirty-first, five to seven. You're the only one here, I don't know. Sorry.
It's all right.
Actually, yeah, seriously, we should, seriously, we should do that, yeah, Rob, if you would, uh, call them and remind them that we will have trick or treating, so you can wrap up by that day.
Do I need to tell people in the paper not to visit the house that we were talking about earlier?
That might be a good place to go. Hopefully he won't have his front light on.
They don't want a Tootsie Roll popping up in your thing, do you?
All right, now, offer a motion to adjourn? Prove move, adjourn.
Sorry.
Motion by Jim, second by Val to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Six forty-four.